Have one, and I know exactly who it is. We ready? Well, thank you for doing that for me, Mr. Thompson. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I can take the gavel back. I appreciate that. There shouldn't be any need to break it tonight. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Circa-- I mean Midwest City Council meeting this evening. I think, what is it, June 25th? Thank you for being here. I officially called this meeting to order, and we do have a quorum. So, let's start out with the invocation by Mr. Vaughn Sullivan. Pledge allegiance will be led by Ward Six Councilman, Mr. Favors, and we'll go from there. Please stand.
You're about me, please. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing to be upon this meeting tonight, Father, and we ask that you give this council wisdom and discernment. Father, we ask that decisions that are made be in for the good of the whole tonight, and Father, that they be in accordance with your will. Father, we thank you so much for this great city and state and nation, the freedoms we enjoy, and those who are willing to serve and guard and guarantee them. Be with them and protect them while they're at the switch. Thank you so much for your son, Jesus, the love that you've shown for all of mankind by sending your son. We ask these favors in his holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for that. I've got one proclamation, and I guess I'll go down front. Where's the microphone, Jill?
Right there.
Oh. That's a joke. Everybody settle down. We don't have a lake.
But we get water from a lake that we appreciate very much.
Very well said. Whereas Oklahoma's landscape is home to more than 200 lakes and reservoirs with more miles of shoreline than Gulf of Mexico and the Atlantic Ocean shorelines combined. Whereas these bodies of water are among Oklahoma's most valuable resources. Whereas Oklahoma lakes and reservoirs play an important part in the role of in Oklahoma history, growth and financial well-being, and improving quality of life for all of our residents. Whereas Lake Thunderbird-- I almost said Texoma. Lake Thunderbird Watershed Alliance was established in 2020 to work cooperatively with residents and communities and other stakeholders to protect the water quality and quality of Lake Thunderbird. Whereas the LTWA serves as the clearinghouse for information about Lake Thunderbird and its uses, recreational activities, water quality improvement projects, and associated research and educational materials. Whereas the LTWA is working in cooperation with a variety of partners, including Lake Thunderbird State Park, Thunderbird Sailing Club, the city of Midwest City, and other surrounding cities to educate the public about the lake and its watershed. Now therefore, I'm at the Mayor of Midwest City here by the claim of July. The whole month of July.
The whole month.
The driest month in the year.
No better time to appreciate your lakes.
Lake Appreciation Month, and ask that you all enjoy the lakes. As a matter of fact, I'll be at Thunderbird-- not Thunderbird, but Murray the last week of this month. Here you go. Party pick.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move into community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon.
Starting with trash and recycling services for July 4th. We will be observing Independence Day on Thursday, the 4th. If Thursday is your normal day for trash service or a week recycling, please put your-- place your trash and recycling carts out at the curb on Wednesday by before 7:00 a.m., July 3rd. So we'll pick up this Wednesday for Thursday. So, and we'll be sending out an Everbridge call, I assume, on that as well. Okay? And also, our compost facility on 36th Street will be closed on July 4th as well. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, if you know any attorneys that would like to be a judge for the city of Midwest City, please forward that information to me as soon as possible. And also, I do want to remind council and the audience that we do have a veterans outreach going on July 9th at the community center, encouraging veterans that have not applied for their veterans' benefits. OKVA and the federal VA will be at our community center from 2:00 till 6:00 in the evening to help veterans get benefits and walk them through that argus process. So, that's all I have. And we'll move into the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the council members, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item, if there-- or if there is not a unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item number four, there's no action to be taken on that.
I would so move, with the exception of item number two as well. No. The community grant.
Pull.
Number two.
Number two.
So I have a motion to pull two and four. Is that my understanding? And I have a second on favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action approving one, the proposed 2024 Action Plan, a part of the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan and Strategy for the Use of the 2024 Community Development Block Grant Funds, Authorization of the Mayor to Submit the Approved and/or Modified Certifications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing-- authorization of the Mayor and City Manager into necessary contracts to implement the said program. We have-- Terry Craft is on vacation, so Ashley Stevenson is here to answer any questions.
Ashley, I brought this up, not to dispute anything, but to comment publicly that this is one of the best put-together grants that I've ever seen. I did that professionally, and I wanted to congratulate Terry for the hard work she does. I know it doesn't go very far. It's a half-- still half of me, $500,000, but nearly. But it is spread over many agencies, one of which is Leah's Hope. And as I was looking through the addendums, I noticed that a representative for Leah's Hope, while thanking us for the money, mentioned that Leah's Hope, as I'm sure lots of other organizations, has ongoing problems with transportation and legal services. I need help in those two areas for their clients. And I wanted to use this as an opportunity to encourage Terry and you in the future, when you have an opportunity, or if you see an opportunity, to help Midwest City enhance its transportation infrastructure for the-- for those individuals that are challenged in some way, financially, physically, or whatever. The bus system is a wonderful addition, but it doesn't help in some cases. It's just not flexible enough. So that was my point, and so congratulations on a wonderful grant. I appreciate that. I'd just like to do better on the transportation issues. I don't know. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to that? No?
Ashley, you might want to talk about, under the embark program, the disabled.
The paratransit program.
Paratransit program.
There's the $5,000 of the CDVG budget goes to the paratransit program, and that is within three-quarters of a mile of Route 15. A special bus transportation for disabled and seniors, that type of services. Not necessarily for the low-income clientele of Leah's Hope, but.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Brittany Hussein with Leah's Hope. I just-- I want to thank all of you and thank Terry and Ashley because they do wonderful work. They're-- the commitment that the city has to not just Leah's Hope, but other nonprofits and applicants for this grant, it really is huge. I went in talking with other grantors, different foundations in the metro area, in Oklahoma County. It really says a lot to have our city invest in what we're doing, invest in what's happening in our city. And so that is very much appreciated, and we thank you very much. As I told Mark, transportation will probably always be a barrier for the demographic that we serve. I see the embark is on the agenda tonight, the consent agenda, and we are grateful to have that service here in Midwest City. And we-- it's not lost that we are a community that has it. You know, Dell City doesn't have it. It could always be improved because there are some limits with the bus system in Midwest City for our-- in particular, for our residents and our participants. But we are very thankful that that is an option for our ladies, and just thank you for the continued support.
Thank you, Brittany. Mr. Thompson, I entertain a motion to approve, number two.
I make a motion to approve. I don't know.
I have a sec-- I have a motion and a second on favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. Now moving to our discussion items. Discussion item number one, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action approving a contract with Arledge and Associates to perform the fiscal year 2324 audit of the Midwest City's financial statements for the audit fee of $52,400 and a single audit fee of $5,200 and major programs $3,700 each. Mr. Cromar.
Yeah, so this will be the third year that we're using Arledge. We very much enjoy working with them. They are one of the very few companies that can handle doing government accounting. I was looking back on the other company words that we reached out to, and they were the ones that, just kind of looking at the other ones, where when they put in their bid, that they promised to give us 740 hours' worth of work versus the other ones that range anywhere from 420 to 470. And even with those different numbers and hours that they committed, they were still much lower than all the other ones. They know our books very well. We very much appreciate them. They are very easy to communicate with. They've helped us hit all our deadlines, and so staff would recommend to approve the contract.
Any questions?
Absolutely. Yeah, they've helped us. They've helped us find issues. Like, there's always issues. You know, we have thousands of interactions, you know, thousands of processes that happen, and so they always help us improve. But nothing that has-- should be alarming. You know, if we just put maybe something in the wrong account, we fix it, and now we're better the next year.
Any other questions? Chair to entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second on favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. Thank you, Tia. Item number two, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2174, public hearing, discussion, consideration, and possible action approval of the preliminary plat of Dentistry by Design for the property described as part of the north half, the southwest quarter, Section 12, Township 11, North Range 2 West, Indian Meridian, also addressed as 2500 South Douglas Boulevard. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is a preliminary plat application. The lauding question is being requested be subdivided into three lots. All three lots are proposed to share a single entrance off of Douglas. The plat meets all of our requirements at this time. The applicant will work with staff as they get further along in the development to kind of make sure that there's adequate fire turnaround, the water line gets looped, and things of that nature. Staff recommends approval of this application, and the planning commission also recommended approval.
Prior to you getting here, Matt, this was a-- this was a-- this was a big deal here because of the drainage and also from the people in the orchard with the tree line. And so hopefully, that will continue because we've spent considerable effort through the city to make sure that the drainage there is dealt with properly. And we just need to make sure that they're good partners with us to continue through that. Along with the-- on the northeast corner of where they're developing, making sure there's a tree buffer for the residents of the orchard.
Yeah, and on the preliminary plat, they've set aside, if you look at the plat, a good portion on the back, you know, where there's the creek that runs through there, and they've set a prelim-- at the preliminary stage, they're proposing to set a tree preservation easement over that area. So that area should largely remain the same.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council according-- about this issue? Hearing or seeing none, chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. Item number three, the applicant has pulled the request, so no action needed on that one. Item number four, Mr. Lyon.
PC 2178, public hearing, discussion, consideration, and possible action approving an ordinance to redistrict from planned unit development governed by General Commercial District C4 to amended planned unit development governed by General Commercial District C4 for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 12, North Range 2 West, Indian Meridian, also located or known as 8713 East Main Street, Midwest City. Mr. Summers.
Thank you. This is an amendment to a PUD that was approved several years ago. At that time, what is now the Moose Lodge, or was the Moose Lodge, had a PUD approved. The applicant today is in the process of purchasing the site to use for personal storage units. Everything that's in the design statement from the PUD that was approved previously is applicable and would work for his development. The, I guess, the thing that brings us here before you tonight is that the master plan map, which is part of the PUD, didn't show that they were going to add any new buildings when they had the old PUD approved. So now that they're proposing to add new storage units to the site, it exceeds the 20% increase in building coverage that I could approve administratively. So really, he's coming before you to amend the PUD to change the master plan to show that some of that parking lot area will now have, or is proposed to have, storage units on it. Staff recommends approval of this application. We did get three phone calls, but nobody who called us objected to the application. They were just seeking information about it, and the planning commission also recommended approval of this application.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to bring before council? Mr. Goldschlager?
Glenn Goldschlager, 1409 Evergreen Circle, Midwest City. That's up the street from me. Are you-- all the restrictions that were on it before are staying on it now? Are the units going to be fenced?
It may be. It may be fenced. There are screening requirements between this commercially zone property and any residential properties that adjoining it, so they would have to comply in some form or fashion with our screening requirements, whether that be with events or landscaping. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Any further questions, Ms. Summers? Chair to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve with the understanding that all previous restrictions that were put on when they were originally issued remain in effect along with to ensure that the new area complies with the screening restrictions or requirements of the city.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. Now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Keeping in mind that since it's not an agenda item, we cannot engage in a back-and-forth conversation, but if it's notable, we'll bring it back as an agenda item on a further in the future. Mr. Goldschlager, the floor is yours, sir.
He's already been up there once.
No, I get two. You guys get more than Ward Seven does. Every time we've done the grants, we've-- it's been coming up over the years that we're giving money to city departments. This has been something that's just been an ongoing thing. I'd like for the-- before we give the grants this year, that we get the hospital trust together and maybe just review the rules. It's been a long time since we've actually sat down and reviewed the rules and decided what we wanted to give to who. And it just wouldn't be a bad idea. That's one thing. The other thing is, I wasn't here when you passed the budget. I just wanted to thank staff for such an incredible document. As you all know, I actually read the thing. And it's a special document. If you read other cities' budgets, it'll put down the Parks Department, but it won't break it down the way we break it down. You know exactly how many people are in each department, exactly what it's costing for each department. If you want to know what the pool's going to cost next year, it's a little over $400,000 for 70 days, by the way. That doesn't include the $350,000 liner we're going to put in it or the $100,000 of work we're going to do under it. It also doesn't include the cost of the police officer that's now there all the time. So people need to know that that pool's going to cost almost $1 million for 70 days next year. Not arguing with it, but people need to know where money goes. They need to know what your fire department's costing. That we're buying seven new police units, five new SUVs, and two pickup trucks. And those things aren't cheap. You know, other cities are driving around on a lot less things than we are. And it'll be nice to get rid of all the cars and get our officers in SUVs, which is a lot safer for them, a lot more comfortable for them, and I think it's better overall for the city. This is a great place. We have 550 incredible employees. All of them could turn around tomorrow and go to work across the street at the single largest employer in the state of Oklahoma, make more, and probably have better benefits. So we all need to appreciate these 550 people, from our incredible city manager, all the way to the people that clean our streets and our parks and everything else. They're incredible people, and we need to spend this year thinking about that. Let's just make this the year of the Midwest City employee. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. We do have an executive session attached to this agenda, and the chair to entertain a motion to recess. I'm sorry? I've got a motion and a second on favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. We're hereby recessed, and I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so trustees can, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if there's not unanimous consent, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. And we now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Glenn, your time's up. Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned, and I call to order the Memorial-- Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second on favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. We do have one discussion item, Mr. Lyon, discussion item number one.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action following agreement with Capital Decisions, Inc. the amount of $115,000 to continue to provide consultant services regarding economic community development and redevelopment interest in Midwest City for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025. This is the JR Rescovak contract.
Does anyone have any questions about this? JR is our lobbyist in Washington, D.C., and has been doing a phenomenal job for a number of years, and chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. And now move into new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned, and again, we do have an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, you have an executive session in this agenda.
Time out. I got it. I chair to entertain a motion to recess and go to the next agenda.
Make a motion.
All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. I call to order the Special Economic Development Authority. We, once again, having a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that trustees can, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or unanimous consent cannot be received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Motion carries. When you now move into public discussion, does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing or seeing none, we're hereby adjourned, and I need a motion to reconvene the Midwest City Council.
Second.
We are now reconvened on the Midwest City Council agenda, and I need a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Lyon, you want to read the executive session?
Discussion, consideration, possible action to, one, enter into executive session as allowed under Title 25, Section 307b3. Discuss confidential communications concerning the purchase or appraisal of real property regarding Sooner Town Center. Authorize the city manager to take action as appropriate based on discussion.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the executive session. What? I'm sorry?
Love to do that as well.
See, I got a lot of bosses up here. I need a motion to reconvene the hospital authority.
Motion.
All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we need to reread the executive session, Mr.?
No. No, you-- the reading is something that's traditional within Midwest City. It is not required. You just have to have a motion to go into executive session.
I believe we've gone into executive session.
Not for the hospital authority.
Motion to go into executive session for the hospital authority.
All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we are in the executive session. Ladies and gentlemen-